Morning. I'd like to call the County Board of Supervisors to order on Tuesday, January twenty, June twenty eighth at nine AM. Would you please join me for pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
District twelve. This is district twelve. This is online.
She's online?
Yeah.
This is online.
Oh, she is online?
Yep. Alright, we have twenty present, one absent. Presentation of the agenda. Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Introduction of the new library director.
Sure, so Dominic, if you would, oops, sorry. If you wouldn't mind if we have Dominic come up to the front over here, so we can, we can properly introduce you. So this is Dominic, he's been with us probably, is your third week?
It's my third week, twenty-one days.
Good morning.
Wait, we just, I got that changed, I got two minutes I gotta work on, sorry. So normally what you do is they, when you have a new department head, we invite them to the meeting, but we give you an opportunity, maybe just to give you a quick introduction for yourself and maybe just a quick background and nothing really long, but.
Okay, so under three minutes.
There you go, yep.
Um, my name is Dominic Frandra, um, I've been a lifelong Wisconsin resident. My, most recently from Anago, Wisconsin, um, before that from Opeka, another state. There you go, sorry. Okay, sorry. So my name is Dominic, I'm a lifelong Wisconsin resident, most recently from Anago, Wisconsin, and before that from Opeka, and before that from Madison, and before that Superior, and before that Prescott. And so I've been all up and down the state, uh, doing various things, but I've been in the library world ever since I was in high school and got addicted to reading then, and that's what I really like to do, is make sure everybody has what they want as far as their research, as far as what they want for recreational reading, and all the fun and different services the library's been able to offer in the, geez, the twenty-some-odd years since I've been in the library world, so from pre-internet to internet to post-COVID sometime. So, I don't know, if anybody has any questions or comments, my door is always open, I'd like to, um, see with you. I'm always, uh, open to things that you'd like to see at the library, so let me know if there's something you wanna see or something we can improve and we'll work on it. Great, thank you very much, welcome. Thanks.
Okay, correspondence, email from Christine Reed at six twelve twenty-two. Any additional correspondence to add, supervisors?
We did have a email correspondence that was, I think, sent out overnight, that might be in your inboxes, but we'll note that, I guess, as a part of the next county board meeting just because of the timing, so, but there was a correspondence you did receive.
Public comment, Ken?
Sure, so for public comment, I'll start with those individuals online or on the phone. If you would like to speak, uh, you can do so by, uh, online by raising your hand, and I'll give you the floor. Uh, likewise, if you're on the phone, you could hit star nine, and I can also give you the opportunity to speak. So I will ask twice if there's anyone online who would like to speak. For the second time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, showing none, we will now then turn to, I guess, inside here, if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak. If you could please, uh, if you'd like to speak, please stand, uh, come up to the back left turn, we'll give you the mic, you have three minutes to address the board. Or you'll have to turn on the mic in the back. Sir?
Uh, my name is Dennis Overston, and I have property on the Forestville Dam flowage. When we had the drawdown for two years, the anticipation was to have it cleaned up and in a very nice, uh, state of condition. Uh, before the drawdown, I was able to go fishing, use my boat, go on a afternoon ride, and everything was fine, you know? And now, there's no way, uh, the, there's whips and reeds and LJ and just, you can't use a boat with the motor is gonna be plugged within feet from where you take off. Fishing, I know, is gonna be down for four years anyhow, 'cause all the fish were removed from the dam. I know they're transplant it now, but they have to grow. In the condition the dam is right now, the flowage, I'm just wondering when or if this is ever gonna be cleaned up. As, in the condition it is right now, they don't even have the boat ramp in by the park for access for general boats to come in, because you can't use them. I mean, it's that bad, it's, it was in a lot better condition before the drawdown than what it is now. I'm, I've been there since nineteen ninety, and I've never seen it in as bad of a condition as it is right now. And, uh, in respect to the drawdown, I believe that's what caused this vegetation, it's stuff to thrive. And right now, they, my property is debelated much more than what it ever has been. And I'm just wondering what the plans are for this.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Christine Reed, five nine seven, Sleepy Hollow Drive. My correspondence is in the agenda packet, however, I don't think that the photographs that were sent with it made it in there. They're certainly available, and anyone who is interested at all should go to the Friends of the Forestville Dam Facebook page. There's a wealth of information there. If you wanna see the conditions, uh, videoed and, and pictures of it. On September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, I spoke to the board during public comment about the Forestville Mill Pond drawdown plan. There's an activity on this plan that says vegetation assessment by July fifteenth, and identify preferred control method, and then some options. I spoke on September twenty-first, there was absolutely no response, so I emailed on September twenty-fourth and reiterated my concerns and my questions, and the fact that I wanted to see the vegetation assessment and the decision on a control method. Mr. Pabbage responded on September thirtieth, he started the response with, have your attorney contact our attorney, which, you know, pretty much epitomizes what we've been through for going on four years. At any rate, um, I, I did respond to that by saying, I don't believe that I need an attorney to get information that's readily available to the public. So, if, there were several back and forths, uh, at, at one point, he addressed my question, what is the recommended method of control for the vegetation that had taken root in that, that, uh, flowage during the drawdown? He said, the vegetation will be allowed to live or die off naturally with the water level back up. The, the drawdown finished October seventh of two thousand twenty-one. Tremendous relief. We, we walked the flowage for the first time that winter, when it was frozen. We were not able to walk the flowage during the winter, the, the previous two years. We had no access to the enjoyment of the mill pond, other than those occasions when it failed to overflow the top of the dam. Look, I need more than three minutes to, in order to finish this thought. Nobody else is here to speak.
It's up to the chair.
So, so when we walked.
Christine, I'll, I'll allow an additional three minutes.
Thank you. When we walked in the winter, there was stubble sticking through the ice, twigs, which we assumed was going to die with the refill. This spring, it has grown to more than six feet above the water, has fanned out into sandbar, willow, and, uh, covered with foliage. The front of our property, if you did read my comment, is obliterated with narrowleaf cattail. There's Eurasian water milfoil throughout. We did manage eventually to get a canoe through the dense junk that's out there and pull samples. We know that soil and water had people out there pulling samples of the vegetation, see what it is. So, uh, first, yeah, we're very excited about getting back out there after the drawdown completed. And early May, we put the canoe in, my neighbor and I, and we started to paddle upstream to the island, and we're literally completely stuck in vegetation. A lot of it at that time was dead reeds that had massed. Since then, the, the plants that are in there, the woody brush has grown to completely obliterate the, the, the place. Why isn't the dock in at the boat lounge? It was, early this spring, a couple of people managed to get their, uh, pontoon boats in there, but now it's laying on the shore, probably a liability to anybody that goes out there. Our neighbors won't sit on their deck, they're so distraught about the appearance, they avoid looking out their windows. Today, there would be more people here, you would've heard from other people. They literally told us they're afraid of retaliation, because that's how this county board operates. If you speak out and question anything that they say, they will retaliate. And I can, if I had more than another three minutes, I'd give you some examples of that. And the huge lies that were told from the beginning, when this was proposed in December of two thousand eighteen, when Ken Fisher opened public comment by saying, I'm required to have thirty minutes of, of public comment, but I don't wanna hear any whining and complaining. That has been the tone from the county since the day that they proposed it. We're going on four years, and we're still trying to get some help and still being treated like we're annoying the board and county employees. Greg Koltos does not deserve to be, uh, a county conservationist for the Soil and Water Department. And if anybody wants to talk about it, I'd be happy to do that, be happy to provide you with written evidence of why that's not a good idea. Same goes for the chairman of board who lied then.
Okay, enough, that's enough.
No, it's not enough.
We've already extended enough. Your comment period's over.
And instead, he's re-elected as chairman of the board. That is the face of the Door County Board, liars.
Any other public comment?
Wait, Sue, is that?
There we go.
Sue Powers, seven three six Kentucky Street, Sturgeon Bay. I'm a recent retiree who cares about the community, and I'm here to encourage approval of the remote work policy on your agenda today. The county's in a staffing crisis, especially in the Health and Human Service Department. Of course, right now workforce retention is a challenge all over, but please, let's not use that as an excuse to not take responsibility or action within our own county workforce. We learned from COVID how to efficiently, effectively, and safely work remotely. Technology allows us to communicate constantly with coworkers via phone, email, online chat, and video meetings. Job performance and productivity can be monitored remotely. Some of the public health staff members were actually more productive while working from home during COVID, because they avoided the usual workplace distractions. Let's please get past the idea that all employees need to be treated exactly the same. The snowplow driver will understand why they can't work from home, just as the public health nurse will understand they can't work from home on the day of a vaccine clinic. An increase in wages and benefits are needed to retain staff, along with a culture shift to truly respect employees and allow them to have more of a voice in working conditions. What you can do today will not cost anything, is to approve the policy to allow eligible employees to work up to three days a week from home. Replacing employees is difficult and costly in ways you may not have thought of. Those employees who remain are tapped out from repeatedly orienting new staff, making it more likely they will also exit. As a Door County resident, I would very much like there to be capacity in the behavioral health team to assist many folks with mental health concerns and problems with addiction that have escalated during the pandemic. Likewise, I expect the Child Protective Services Division to have capacity to protect our children who are at risk. A well-trained public health workforce with capacity to promote and protect our health and respond to emergencies such as COVID-nineteen or local outbreaks of communicable diseases is vital. If you imagine that in times of crisis, the state will be boots-on-the-ground, help here to assist, I wanna be clear, that is not how it works. While the state provides guidance, each jurisdiction is responsible for itself in regards to action in these matters. These workforce concerns affect the health and well-being of our community. Please support the retention of our valuable county workforce approving the remote work policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody else? Alright, we'll close public comment. Is there any supervisor's response? We're gonna move down to special reports for Destination Door County.
So I'd like to introduce, uh, for those that don't know, Julie Gilbert, who's our new CEO at Destination Door County, and obviously a familiar face, John Jerris, who's been, uh, with Destination Door County for
Few moons.
Few moons, so, but they're here to give us, uh, those requests to get some updates on what they're trying to accomplish. There's been a lot of activity and some milestones that have definitely been achieved this year, so I will turn over the floor. Just give me one second, just to put this in the right view and also transfer the sharing of the screen, since we have people online.
Ken's going to be our Vanna White.
Yes.
We'll see how he does.
The pressure's on.
Uh, it is. I'll go ahead and, and start, just because we, we wanna thank, uh, the Door County Board of Supervisors again for passing Proclamation twenty-two-two-dash-one-seven at your March twenty-second meeting this year, officially denoting May first through the seventh as Travel and Tourism Week in Door County. Destination Door County appreciates the county board recognizing the importance of tourism and the opportunity that this special week provides for enhancing industry awareness with Door County residents, so again, thank you so much. So our organizational roots in Door County date back to March eighteen eighty-four, which is pretty remarkable. I've been here seven months, and I look at that and I'm like, wow, that, that's really amazing. We were officially founded in April eighteen ninety-one and are one of the oldest destination organizations in the country. And reflecting our willingness to evolve with the times, Destination Door County is the eighth name of our organization's history. So many people remember us as the Door County Chamber of Commerce, and we held that name from nineteen twenty-four to two thousand four, or Door County Visitor Bureau, which was from two thousand seven to two thousand nineteen. We have had the name Destination Door County since January of two thousand twenty. And while our funding sources and organizational names may have changed over the years, our mission to promote the county and serve our local businesses and work to better our community has remained steadfast for the past one hundred and thirty-eight years. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the Tourism Zone, which was created in May of two thousand seven, when ten communities formed the zone according to the Wisconsin State Statute sixty-six point zero-six-one-five. By the end of two thousand eight, all nineteen communities in Door County were a part of that Door County Tourism Zone. And this was a result of a grassroots efforts by residents called the Door County Peninsula Strategic Marketing Coalition. They fundraised and volunteered their time to raise money for a market study. And the market study showed that Door County needed new revenue sources to create and implement results-driven marketing to stop losing that market share. Membership dues were just not enough, and for Door County to remain competitive, the only option was to generate money for a cohesive and unified marketing campaign. Room tax revenue provides the mechanism that ensures ongoing funding for the promotion and development of tourism in Door County, and these funds allow Door County to stay in the consideration set of visitors' planning cycle. So through two thousand twenty-one, the municipal room tax was five-point-five percent, and this tax was divided into three different ways. Thirty percent of room tax collections went and still continue to go back to the municipalities of where they were collected. And these funds can be spent for any deemed, use deemed necessary by that particular community's municipal body. And then, at that time, sixty-six percent of collections were distributed to Destination Door County for marketing. These funds were spent on items which qualify as tourism and marketing expenses under our Wisconsin State Statute. And four percent was retained by the Door County Tourism Zone for expenses related to cost, distribution, and enforcement of the tax collection. All zone commissioners, again, are still volunteers, but now there is one full-time employee as well as one part-time employee. So here you see the steady increase of lodging tax dollars with a slight dip in two thousand twenty and then that huge increase in two thousand twenty-one. And it's important to note that at year-end two thousand twenty-one, from twenty, excuse me, from two thousand seven, the Tourism Zone has collected sixty-point-eight million dollars in room tax, forty-point-one million to Destination Door County, and eighteen-point-two million to member municipalities. Beginning January first of this year, the municipal room tax rate increased from five-point-five percent to eight percent. And again, thirty percent of those room tax collections still go back to the municipalities where they were collected. And again, those funds are unrestricted, they can be used on anything that the community's municipal body deems necessary. Seventy percent of those collections are now distributed to Destination Door County, again, for tourism marketing and promotional and management purpose, purposes. Excuse me, again, all following the Wisconsin State Statute. And also new this year, the Tourism Zone's administrative expenses, including the cost of tax collection, distribution, and enforcement, are now paid for by the member municipalities. So in May, during National Travel and Tourism Week, we officially signed our new entity agreement with the Tourism Zone. And this new agreement continues to govern our relationship between the two organizations, and it really ushers in a new era of partnership and collaboration. Destination promotion, development, and management are the benefit and well-being of all Door County citizens and communities. And by working more closely with the Tourism Zone Commission, we will be ensuring that we expand our perspectives and creating more robust tourism programming. So the goal of these essential programs will be to enhance the quality of life in Door County by creating additional opportunities that support our local residents who depend on tourism dollars to provide for their families. So you can see a breakdown of how room tax dollars flow through the system in Door County. The lodging properties collect, provide then, uh, to the Tourism Zone Commission, and the Zone Commission provides back to the municipalities of that thirty percent and seventy percent to Door County. Unrestricted municipalities restricted to Destination Door County. Next slide. I'm gonna turn this slide over to, um, John to review the economic impact of this last year.
So the economic impact last year, as, as anybody driving around last year probably realized, was pretty substantial. And now we have the numbers to back that up. Uh, in the packets that we put on your table or in front of you, um, you'll find two things. Number one is a newspaper insert that we put in the April twenty-ninth issue of the Peninsula Pulse. Uh, some great information there about, uh, the tourism industry, our organization, room tax. Uh, and that was distributed to every mailbox holder in the county. So our goal with that piece was really to get to every resident that is here. Um, and anybody else that picked up the Pulse at particular issue. Uh, there's some great information in there, which is why we wanted to get it to you. Also in there is this fun little fact sheet. Uh, it's a nice little two-pager, easy to digest, and it really does talk about the, the impact of tourism from an economic standpoint last year in two thousand twenty-one. You'll see, it was very busy and more money than ever flowed through our economy as a result of tourism. Uh, visitors spent four-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars directly in Door County last year, and when you add in indirect and induced spending, that total reaches five-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars, so over half a billion dollars, uh, as a result of tourism here. Some really good stats, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing for you, because I know, uh, we've got, we hired a good librarian director, and I know you all can read, so I won't go through that. But one thing I do wanna, an interesting fact I wanna point out, it's down on the bottom in the Did You Know section, is that each occupied household in Door County would need to be taxed an additional three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to replace the visitor taxes received by state and local governments last year. So, um, that, that's just, I think it, it does help to show how it really does impact all of us from a financial standpoint and the tax dollars that the tourism industry brings into our county. If you are interested in a more detailed report, this is two pages. By the way, on the back, you'll see a history of visitor spending, state and local taxes, and room tax collections. It's a nice little quick glance. Uh, on the bottom of the front page, you'll see, uh, that you, a, a link to download the entire study that we commissioned with a company called Tourism Economics. Uh, if you're interested in a lot more detail, feel free to check that out, uh, and it's available online, and anybody is welcome to see that. So, I'll pass it back over to Julie.
Thanks, John. So inspired by thirty percent of these room tax dollars that flow back to our municipalities, again, breaking it out into eighteen-point-two million between two thousand seven to twenty twenty-one, some great things have occurred in Door County, and we'd like to show you a short video which shares some of these positive things that have happened. Thanks, Ken.
Oh, just gotta give you a second, this is stop the sharing to share the other video.
First settled for its natural resources, Door County's raw materials of stone, lumber, and fish were taken from the land and waters and shipped off to the growing new cities of the Midwest and beyond. Our community's natural beauty was being harvested and sent away as raw materials to build other communities. But just as the unsustainable boom of the extractive industry was busting, a new possibility presented itself, and in the late eighteen hundreds, tourism became a viable economic opportunity. Ever since then, the Door County community has worked to preserve its natural resources and its heritage in order to perpetuate and grow a healthy economy, better the visitor experience, and continue to improve the quality of life for its local residents. The tourism economy has experienced its shares of ups and downs. In two thousand and five, it hit one of its low points, and the livelihoods of the local residents were in residents were in jeopardy. In an effort to restabilize the tourism economy and rebuild the infrastructure that supported visitors and locals alike, the business community partnered with local governments and started to implement a countywide room tax in two thousand seven. Since then, room tax dollars have been an integral part in the purchase of land and waterfront to expand and enhance access to shorelines and open spaces. Starting with the purchase of Helm's Four Seasons Hotel in Sister Bay, other communities have followed suit. And in the years to come, Liberty Grove, Sturgeon Bay, Bailey's Harbor, Fish Creek, Jacksonport, the Village of Egg Harbor, and the County of Door would follow with substantial purchases of their own. In fifteen years, local governments have spent more than twenty-six million dollars on shoreline purchases, opening up one hundred twenty-eight acres and twenty-seven hundred feet of shoreline frontage to the public. Along with these acquisitions come improvements like better accessibility, playgrounds, pavilions, boardwalks, and kayak launches. In that same period of time, thousands of acres of forests, bluffs, wetlands, and open spaces have been added to the public realm, thanks to the efforts of the Door County Land Trust, the Nature Conservancy, and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. It is these collective investments in Door County that improve the quality of life for residents and the experience for the visitor, which in turn creates more funding to preserve more shorelines and more open space for public use. Prior to two thousand and five, our individual municipalities, business, and community associations competed with one another. The economic downturn served as a unifying force, and our community leaders discovered common ground. They shared ideas and experiences and began to move forward together. In two thousand seven, the former Door County Chamber of Commerce evolved into the Door County Visitor Bureau, which is now known as Destination Door County, and they became the leading voice for promotion of our community. Over the following fifteen years, our business community, local governments, and visitors all have seen growth. All along, the community coordinators have worked together to create a bridge between visitors, local residents, and municipal governments with the goal of improving life for us all. With this growth came significant improvements for the local residents and visitors alike, improvements like public park additions and expansions in Bailey's Harbor, Sister Bay, and Sturgeon Bay. Sustainability initiatives gained a foothold across the county, with communities of Egg Harbor, Ephraim, and Fish Creek acquiring green tier designations, as well as electrical-vehicle charging stations have become commonplace. Door County communities gain more public waterfront in communities like Bailey's Harbor, Gills Rock, Egg Harbor, Fish Creek, Jacksonport, and Sister Bay than in any other time in our community's history. Playgrounds have been expanded, dog parks have been added. The infrastructure of the county has been vastly upgraded with improved transportation and walkability in Jacksonport, Fish Creek, Sister Bay, Ephraim, and Sturgeon Bay. In addition, major broadband initiatives are underway, paving the way for the next generation of internet connectivity. Preservation of our culture and history has taken center stage in Sturgeon Bay, Fish Creek, Sister Bay, and Ephraim, as coordinated efforts with their local historical societies have helped preserve irreplaceable historical structures for future generations. Outdoor recreation opportunities in Southern Door have become more accessible year-round. Festivals and events such as Death's Door BBQ on Washington Island have expanded to provide a more diverse offering for visitors as well as residents. Not only have the traditional festivals continued to go strong and bring visitors to us in the shoulder seasons, but the community-focused programming at the Door Community Auditorium and Crest Pavilion have also been added to enrich residents' lives. Overall, these efforts benefit the Door County community as a whole. Balancing the needs of the locals, businesses, and our visitors will continue to be a challenge. How well we all work together, plan, listen, and collaborate will determine what kind of home we will have in the future. Door County is well-positioned. The community coordinators, local government, and Destination Door County are all committed to preserving and advancing this community we all love. The future of our community is bright, and the best is yet to come.
Couple more slides.
Door County developed a interesting maritime tradition because of several...
Lost control for a second, sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and speak as he's trying to... Oh, well, there you go. So as a result of the increased percentage of room tax collected, Destination Door County now funds the Municipal Reimbursement Fund... Oops, I'm sorry. You can go to the next slide, Ken. Excuse me. Municipal Reimbursement Fund, which is to provide financial support to municipalities for tourism-related infrastructure and beautification efforts. So dollars from DDC for this program, DDC, Destination Door County, match the amount each municipality pays to fund the Door County Tourism Zone Commission. And the amount is distributed to each municipality based on the percentage that, of room tax revenue generated. And we also partner and collaborate, as you saw in the video, closely with the community business associations throughout the county. And we've set up the Strategic Community Partnership Program, where nineteen percent of the room tax that Destination Door County receives from the Door County Tourism Zone goes towards that particular program. So the goal of the Strategic Community Partnership Program is to help and support the alignment of those individual efforts of our community business associations in the development of tourism programs while enhancing the quality of their visitor experience and supporting the local community and strengthening our in-county communication efforts. And this is being done by working very closely with them on strategic planning, collaboration, funding, education, research, and marketing opportunities. And the last point there is also, we are in the process of establishing a tourism, infrastructure, and investment grant program, which aims to provide funding opportunities for tourism-related programs and projects that will help shape the Door County economy in ways that balance its long-term sustainability and vibrancy, along with an increase in visitor spending, have a positive impact on the visitor experience, along with a positive economic impact for Door County, and enhance the quality of life for our local residents. So as a community shared values organization, we want to support and strengthen the community's economic position, providing opportunity for all of our residents. And we understand that sustainability is essential for us to build value for our residents, visitors, stakeholders, and future generations. And we must maintain our community and steward our assets while preserving our brand and continuing to grow our potential. We know tourism helps build community, and destination promotion is an essential investment to continue developing those opportunities and building a quality of life for all of our residents throughout Door County. The health of our community's overall economy depends upon a strong travel economy, and lodging tax has provided our community with so many benefits over the years. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all today, and we look forward to becoming more of a resource and partner for the county when it comes to tourism-related data and collaboration. Ken is on our Board of Directors, and we work very closely with Ken on everything that we do. And I'm not sure if I open it for questions, or...
Sure. And Vinnie?
Thank you for the presentation. I was just wondering if this is, maybe it's in the report that you referenced on this year at the bottom, is there a breakdown of the lodging taxing? I see that that was forty-eight point eight percent. Is it broken down to type of lodging? Is that kind of like detailed information available on there?
So, in that particular report, no, but that data is available through the Door County Tourism Zone Commission.
Right, okay.
And in their annual report that they just did two weeks ago, that you'd be able to find that at DoorCountyTourismZone.com. Or let me know if any, and I'd be happy to get you the link to that presentation. But it's available online.
Okay. So that is more of the resource for the background of how the room tax works, where the Destination, or DoorCounty.com is more of the visitor interface of coming to Door County. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of really good data. If you're interested in lodging data, number of permits, where, you know, all sorts of stuff. Door County, the Tourism Zone is a keeper of all that data. They collect it.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, there's one more question. Just, Alexis, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm good. Excuse me, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, very interesting. As a local, obviously we're all locals, but we know that the support for the workforce has been a really big issue, housing, broadband, all that. Curious, when you talk about bettering the life and the experience of the tourism industry and the workers that support making that available and successful as it is, how does these dollars, how can these be dollars, how can these dollars be leveraged for such things as like the drug and alcohol support, treatment support, childcare, housing initiatives, that kind of thing? The things that are actually impacting the workforce and requiring people to work, because there's, there's not a lot of people to work. So then they're overworked and overburdened, and they can't enjoy all the beautiful things that you just shared.
Well, and I, I think two thousand twenty-one was really a tsunami because no J-1 visa workers came in, and there was such a huge increase of visitation that it was, the pendulum went like this, and we're trying to get it back to this. And I know we had over five hundred students that are coming in for this year for workforce. Housing is an issue, and I, I know that the Community Foundation is addressing that as well. And we're working to support organizations that their core competency is to really provide those types of childcare issues and workforce, because it, and, and it's something that the whole U.S. is experiencing, and it's something that we are very aware of, and we're trying to work very closely with everyone in order to help and support that. So it is on our radar, and we're trying to identify where we can fit in and support, again, based on that state statute. So, do you have anything else?
No, I was just going to say, we are restricted with those room tax dollars and how they can be spent based on the state statute. So that's what Julie had indicated. We're trying to figure out how we can be, be a partner and try to help with some of these issues the best we can, given our limitations with the dollars that we've got.
Yeah. That's a good question, though, Alexis. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Just a couple, just one quick comment and one request. Kind of the elephant in the room, if you will, is, is the rise of the work by local municipalities to implement short-term rental ordinances. I would like to see how you're going to engage the residents that live here full-time that are, you know, starting to also push back, as you can see, about impacts of their quality of life. Secondly, I'd like to applaud the work that you're doing on sustainability. It's important. And what I would do is, I would also make sure that you work with your suppliers to engage them. It's great that you're talking about fresh water, but as we learned in our work in creating the Sevastapool Short-Term Rental Ordinance, and in working with the Town of Liberty Grove in researching their short-term rental ordinance, there were a large, almost a majority of the properties that were operating above their Pouts capacity requirements. And that affects not only potential for the consumers that are staying at those short-term rentals, but it impacts the groundwater of the surrounding full-time residents. You know, for the city of Sturgeon Bay, you get your water from, you know, municipal sources, and it's filtered, but that all comes from an aquifer that starts at Carlsville and works its way this way. So you can probably thank the town of Sevastapool for at least trying to enforce the Pouts limit to the capacity that it's designed for, but we have to make sure we do that county-wide since we know that our groundwater is very fragile in the county. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back up to the approval of the minutes of the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two county board meeting. Have a motion in a second. Is there any changes, additions, deletions? Bob?
Special reports. I'm not sure what the question marks were for, possibly just because you had a, there was a name misspelled, but I know Jill's not here to maybe answer that, I don't know, but...
My guess is she didn't know how to spell it.
Yeah, it's P-E-R-L-M-A-N. If that's all it was, it's just, yeah, it's Pearlman, P-E-R-L-M-A-N.
Anybody else? Bud?
Same question.
Wait, please. Anybody else? Anybody? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next up, county administrator.
Sure, so the monthly report is in your packet, so I can feel any questions for that. Nothing special to report in terms of that. And then obviously, our update in terms of our COVID operations, nothing to report of significance this month, so obviously Sue, as her last day was last Friday, so we don't have Sue here to give us, I guess, a formal monthly update. So I'll be working with Joe in the future in terms of how we're going to present those updates, should they be warranted in the future. So with that, I'll, we can continue on.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ken? Todd?
Yeah, I have a question to speak on with you. Yeah, I do have a question regarding the COVID response. So back early on in two thousand twenty, I believe it was, we, we voted on as a county board an emergency order and put in place some tools that allowed the administrator and Sue and others to do things in an emergent case. And I, I don't think we ever sunset that, there wasn't a sunset. So my question only is that, I do believe it's still in effect, and if, if, or has that been sunsetted, or has it been voted on to, is it no longer in place?
No, it's, it's no longer in place. We took that down.
Officially?
Yeah, the emergency order, we, we took that down, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ken?
I'm wondering about the, the conference that's happening, I think it's on Friday for broadband? Or Thursday?
Thursday night, yes.
For anyone, for the, for the supervisors, it's really important if we participate in that, if we can. The more we can learn about it, I think the better it is. And I don't know how your response is, but it's, it's going to be at the ADRC on Thursday night. So for anyone interested, please attend.
I did not pay you for that plug, correct?
I know.
Yeah.
Todd?
Can that be tuned into electronically? I mean, video?
Yes, we did, there is a meeting, notice, that was published. Again, it's not a formal meeting of the subcommittee, but we do have it both noticed, that it's a potential quorum of the board, but I also have a Zoom meeting published for that, for people that could attend online as well.
Pending business, resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash sixty-one, acceptance of Wisconsin Department of Justice Pre-Booking Diversion Program Grant to the Door County Sheriff's Office. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash sixty-one, acceptance of a DOJ pre-booking diversion grant for the amount of one fifty-five, five sixty. It's been an ongoing thing that we received for several years. If there's any further questions, I don't know if the sheriff's in the back or chief deputy could answer any questions or...
Motion in a second.
Pertaining to?
I don't have a second.
Oh, sorry, I did.
There we go, okay. There we go. Any other discussion or questions? No, go to the voter board. Has passed with a majority vote of twenty yes, one absent. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash sixty-two, approval of the Door County Emergency Services' purchase of a used ambulance. Joel?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve real quick. Nope, they did, okay. Resolution 2022-62, approval of an emergency ambulance. As it is said, we've had some issues with getting one of our existing ones under remount and there's a backlog of supply chain issues for getting a new one on order. And we've had some mechanical problems with another one. So it was deemed urgent to pursue a temporary replacement in the meantime. So we, Aaron was able to find one and it's already in-house, yes. So after the fact approval.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, none, we'll go to the voter board. Has passed by a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Resolution 2022-63, approval of the WDH, WDHS, DMS, BCS grant to Door County Health and Human Services Birth to Three Program. Nissa?
Morning. I'd like to make the motion to approve the Resolution Number 2022-63, approval of WDHS, DMS, BCS grant to Door County Health and Human Services Birth to Three Program, which there's gotta be a clerical error because it says prior program, but program. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Try to answer.
Any questions? Alexis?
Thanks. Nissa, can you or is there staff that can answer? I, I see that this is a pandemic-related support grant. Is this something that's been going on though? Is, is the funding for this program something that's typically state-funded? This is just additional dollars or? How, how does this funding fit into the normal operations?
We have Joe available to answer that.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thanks, Nissa.
This is a new funding source. It was a grant that we wrote for. It will develop a well-baby program that will contract out. It'll be run by a combination of United Way and Family Services and then we'll look for ongoing funding for it for the future.
Okay. Because this Birth to Three is a program that's been offered. So I'm just trying to understand how, how is this additional, just you're taking it out of the.
So this is additional dollars. It's not actually going into the department to run Birth to Three. It is a well-baby program, so it will allow us to go out and meet with all families with new children and do screening and try to intercede if there are areas where we experience or see some concern.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? We'll go to the voter board. Has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Resolution 2022-64, approval of the Library Foundation Grant to the Door County Library. Nissa?
She's muted.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself again. All right. I would like to make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-64, approval of Library Foundation Grant to the Door County Library.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
If anyone has some questions, I'll try to answer.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, we will go to the voter board. Has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Thank you. Resolution 2022-65, appointment to the county board subunits, i.e. Resource Planning Committee, CCS, CST, Coordinating Committee, and Children COP Advisory Committee. Have a motion in a second. Any questions? Not by voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Resolution 2022-66, amendment to the Door County Administrative Manual, Section 2.5 Employee Compensation and Section Employee Compensation Handbook. Dave Engelbert?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-66 with the changes to the compensation manual. They deal primarily with the pay to the HR staff for on-call and telecommunicators with their overtime on a daily basis.
Just, just reference from the full county board. We actually did amend this at finance. There was actually three sections and one was removed because we wanted to get some clarification on, I guess, reimbursement for meals. So that'll be coming back next month as part of the amendment. But again, this is supervisor Engelbert had stated, again, you'll see there's just the two sections that then ended up coming forward. Obviously, one was the housing consumer services for their on-call, pay for that, but then also the emergency management for the telecommunicator. So I just wanted to clarify, there was a change from admin to finance and that's why you're seeing two of the three. The third one will be coming back. They both support it. It's just a matter of how we're presenting the wording on it, so just wanted to clarify that.
Any questions? We'll go to the voter board. What are we missing?
Did you die? Okay, I will mark that.
All right, that has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Before I present the next resolution, I do want to make a comment about it. This resolution had, has gone, this program has gone to the administrative committee for the last couple of months. It was tied to also the change of summer hours originally that was separated out by the committee. We looked at it and discussed it. We then tabled it for a month to have further discussion. And at the last admin committee meeting, which was last Tuesday, it failed on a vote of 4-3. I did have some conversation with another supervisor, a couple supervisors contacted me, some staff contacted me. I thought about it. This is the first time I have used the chairman's prerogative to bring something back out of committee and place it on the agenda. Because I felt after those discussions that it, and the length that it took, that we probably needed to have a board-wide discussion of this. So that's why it's on the agenda as it is. Okay? So present Resolution 22-67, amendment to the Door County Administrative Manual, Administration Manual, new section 7.0, Remote Work Policy. Do we have a motion or a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. Discussion, questions, overview?
Sure. I can give a, an overview if you don't, if you just take a minute, just to give context. So I did put a memo out. Again, it came forward, so the memo, I apologize for not including the packet just because of the timing, the how it came together. But just to give you some context, let me just, just walk you through. And I think David did a nice job. So I put down for over the past years, probably even longer than that. Obviously Kelly has worked and I've worked with her on, on different ways that we are looking at our workforce and what we do as an organization. So I guess we're always looking at industry trends, what's happening not only within the local area, what's happening with other counties, and just generally across the board. So as it relates to, I guess, our employee, I guess, options for working, we're looking at really three tools. And I have those listed, this is the history. So we introduced the flex schedules. Those have been in place about a little over a year. That allows the employee to, in essence, set up an alternative schedule for working. It requires the department head approval and also the approval of HR. Again, that's been in place and it has been working well for our workforce. And then we have not had any issues in terms of either the hours or performance or anything related to that. And again, each one of these policies can be, I guess, revoked should the employee not perform when they're obviously using these programs. The second option, obviously, we adopted last month was the modified hours. Again, that was the modified hours, the 4-9-4. That's as in place and we're going through so far for a pilot through October 1st. So I guess our first month under the program, we've not had any significant issues, but we'll continue to monitor that and we'll bring that back to county board in terms of a full performance report. Again, now, the other part of the tool was what's, we're calling the remote, remote work policy. The policy itself allows a maximum of three days per week. Someone had asked, why do we allowing just a maximum of three days versus more than that? I guess it was our initial, I guess, what I considered, I described as putting our foot in the water in terms of trying to do the remote, the work, work from home policy. I was gonna do that because I'm stumbling on that. Versus us allowing it full-time. Again, we thought, just based off our situation with COVID, if you remember, we, during COVID, we had that 50-50, 50% of the time in the office. And we had employees actually going through that cycle where they could work from home, but they also reported back in the office. And when we did that, we saw very good results. So when we put this together, this policy, we felt that the three-day limit at this point in time seemed reasonable versus allowing an employee to work full-time from home. So again, we're trying to, I guess, limit the scope, take a initial step in terms of working with this policy. The main change with this is that it does require specific requirements for the employee. Again, in COVID, it was more reactionary. Now we have the opportunity to actually plan for it. So the employee has to show that they have the proper office and also equipment and broadband speed to perform the work. It has to be approved by the supervisor in terms of the work that they're doing and how they're gonna monitor the work performance. And it does require approval by HR. Again, it only qualifies for employees that are past their introductory period. So we will not hire an employee and say, as part of the hiring process, that they're permitted to work from home upfront. They still have to come into work and perform their work onsite through the introductory period. And should they pass that, then there becomes that opportunity for them to work from home. Again, I put down, we had some of those discussions, it did fail. I had a 4-3 vote at admin. But again, this gives you the context. From my standpoint, from the administration, we were asked to put together, when it was tabled, to put together some information. So there was actually two things of information that we did put together. One was the map that's included in the memo. It shows you what other counties are, have in place. You can actually see the green are counties that do have some form of work from home. The red, do not. And the yellow are in progress and we did have some no responses. Likewise, on page two of the memo, I also just did an initial high-level poll of where we would see how the policy might be used. If you look at it, under the three-day remote option, there's actually very few that would think that'd actually use it. Now, does it mean that there's an area that would come back later and potentially use it? Yes, there could be, but this, off the initial polling of the department heads, this is where they thought employees could have that opportunity. Where we see a greater percent would be the ability to allow employees that work like one day from home to complete their work. In many of those areas, just because of the size of the departments, it only can be done on a rotating basis. But again, I think one of the main hitters is obviously Health and Human Services with the potential of their workforce, given their size. Just really quick then, in terms of the fiscal impact, we didn't put down none at this point in time. Obviously, we do recognize though that there is some time that's required from TS to allow them to set up the technology. Let me just talk about that because that's a big part of this. We have technology where if they're working from home, they are actually not working on their, they're using their PC, but they're not working on their PC in terms of storage or materials or anything like that. They're actually coming through and they're using our Citrix. In essence, what they do is they log in and they take over their desktop here at work. So I know there's some questions in terms of HIPAA and some concerns with that. But again, they're working through our secured systems. Likewise, if it is a position that requires either client interactions or items related to that, we actually have our phone system that actually also is remote. So I actually have my cellphone, if I use, it's called Jabber, the technology. But if I use my phone, I'm actually, can take over my phone in my office from home or wherever I'm at. So if I call you, I, the individual doesn't even know if I'm sitting at my desk or at home. But again, that's technology we're using. So we're not having the employees use their personal phone lines and for that matter either. So again, that's what requires, I guess, technology services to actually have that portion set up. Again, but a lot of that technology was implemented during COVID and now we have it in terms of our resources that are available for use. So again, from our, just from the administrative standpoint, and why I brought this forward initially is again, we're looking at all of our policies as an organization. We're trying to make sure that we're a, a good, I guess, employer, but also a good organization meeting our clients' needs. And again, this is just from my standpoint, just another tool in the toolbox. I know there was concerns that are all valid in terms of what they're doing, but I guess I also defer back to my department heads to make sure that, one, the employees that they're allowing to do it are responsible enough to do it and also that they have the ability to properly track and use the system. So that's giving you context of why we put together the policy and that's why it's here today.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Dan?
Yes. At first, first I voted for it on the executive committee. Second, I was a little skeptical about it, but then when I learned that some of the bullet points that Ken just made, but there's wanting to be three days or less per week is allowed. It's good, a thing that we can reverse. It's another tool in the toolbox, like Ken said. And it's the modern day of people working. I talked to a number of my younger people and a lot of them have their kids working at home and all kinds of stuff like that. And I, I started thinking and I said, I wonder what the county board did 50, 60 years ago when they came to them and says, let's give a one-week paid vacation. And I can see the old county board members then said, pay someone to go fishing? They can go fishing on the weekends. And that's how the workforce has changed over the years and this is a new concept. See, here it is again. So anyway, it's a tool in the toolbox, gives us a better chance to recruit people and I, I'm for it.
Okay. Thank you. Alexis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate supervisor Osted's comments and I just wanted to add on just some caveats to the policy as it's in place. I'm completely supportive of treating our employees as professionals that can manage their own workload and manage their own time. And if they can't, that's a support and a supervisor issue. That's not a policy issue, in my opinion. This foot in the water, to me, sort of doing it half and half is, as I went through it and my own work role was not completely efficient or a true evaluation of how effective somebody can be working from home because you have the cost burden of putting this on the staff, which again, just is, is a burden. You might have more people take advantage of this if you're setting them up at home and not as a duplicate station, but as what you would set them up here, set them up at home, it's the same. It's no additional cost. And people having those two stations or having to come in and out, you're just not as effective as if you're fully capable of working from home, have a full setup and can really make that work. It, there's been no problems as far as technology goes and that kind of thing. My other more specific comment on the policy, I have grave concerns about requiring a, a daily record of work time that identifies the work performed each day to provide the record to their supervisor weekly and can result in discipline or termination. For me, we had that as well, early COVID, and it's 15 to 20 minutes of your day, which doesn't seem like a lot, but that adds up. And especially, there was a previous comment in the policy regarding to the effect that they shall not work more than their allotted time at home, which seems reasonable on the surface, but when you're then taking out half an hour to just do a report that the supervisor may or may not even look at. And again, if you're getting your work done or you're not getting your work done, a daily report is not gonna help the supervisor evaluate that. So I appreciate this. I fully support this. I wish we went further, but I think this is a good first step. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nissa?
Thank you. So I can't see the memo that the rest of you can see, so I have maybe half the info. I would like to know why the, what the discussion was, why the people who voted no voted no, what some of their reasoning was. Because you look at most jobs currently in, whether it's, especially in the tech industry, the majority of them are now remote. As an example, businesses, a lot of them have gone remote for the fact that they no longer have to pay for. As an example, businesses, a lot of them have gone remote for the fact that they no longer have to pay for things like office space, electricity, things like that. So in my eyes, three days a week of remote is not that big of a deal, especially if your position allows it. So if anyone wants to answer why they voted against it, I'd appreciate that. Because like I said, I can't see the, what was put out in person. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nissa. Joel?
My questions have been answered.
Todd?
Yeah, I guess I'll be the first one to say why someone voted no. So a lot of history with this topic and you know, I'll go through some of the reasoning behind what we've discussed in this, in this meeting several times. But from my perspective, I just don't believe that county government is a good place to have work from home options. I think this is a privilege, I don't think anyone can deny that work from home isn't because folks wouldn't want to do it if, if it wasn't, if it was, it was a penalty. But there's a very small band of people in this county that employment that can take advantage of it. Of the three hundred employees, I don't know that ten percent would be able to take advantage of it. I think it would create some strife, I think it would create some internal difficulties. And you know, we talked about this at the admin committee, so there's a lot of water that's been over the dam on this. And Joe and others said that's for the supervisors to manage and I guess I don't necessarily disagree with that. Let's see if I can look at my notes here so I cover all my comments. So you know, on, on the research part of it, I think, in my opinion, the map that was put out is a little misleading. I asked the question early on about whether or not our emergency policy had been revoked. You know, that allowed for work from home under the COVID emergency policy. So technically, you know, had this question have been asked of our county back a month or two or three ago, whenever it was, it was revoked. Our color in Door County would have been green also. So I think, my opinion, and I could be wrong, but a lot of the responses that you got to make us feel visually that we are in a minority. A lot of these counties do have it, but it's a hangover, it's a leftover from what they were forced to do from COVID. So when you ask the simple question, yeah, we have it, we had to put it in place from COVID, it may be left over. So I think that map, in my opinion, is, is a bit misleading. I could be completely wrong, but I've sampled that in some, some cases and that's what I have found to maybe be the case. You know, we talk about tools in the toolbox and, and we've heard it numerous times in the admin committee that, you know, we need tools in the toolbox. We have lots of tools in the toolbox, we really do. And I understand and I get it that this is something for retention and, and you know, maybe this is the way of the future and things of that sort. But you know, to, to steal the sign that Suzie donated to, to put up here is that just because we can, you know, it doesn't mean that we should. I think this is a case that is very much resonating with, with that comment. When I, you know, this, this is called a government center, that's the building we're in. And I think, I, I tend to look at things from, through a public eye and from a taxpayer eye. I, I don't necessarily think, I think when people come here, they expect the folks that the county is paying to be at work and available. Yeah, now you may have a job that's not, that's not public facing, I get it, I understand it. But you're part of the support crew, you're part of the pit crew, call it whatever you'd like, you're part of that crew. And, and I, I don't know, again, call me old fashioned, but I really believe that workplace collaboration, that workplace interaction is a very important piece to, to any place, you know, any place of employment. I, I'm not exactly sure how this works, I think I might know how it would work if it would pass is that, you know, if you're able to take three days off, if you could set up a schedule, a permanent schedule that allow three days off, or maybe it's one day off. You know, we've already approved a modified workday, so four full days and then half a day. You know, you think we'd have a pretty vacant government center on, on Friday is because I would suspect, at least I would. If I were given that option, Friday would be one of the days I would work from home and give me a head start to the camping trip or whatever else it was that I was going to go upon. Now, I'm not, that's not a bad thing for the individual, but is it the right thing for the public? Lastly, I guess what I would ask maybe to consider and, and I, you know, I don't know where this vote is going to go. Well, one more thing before I go to the last thing is I think it's important to note and from a context perspective, the vote was four to three. Yep, it was. But I really believe the sentiment in the committee was six to one. It was four to three because a number of committee, a couple of committee members were pretty adamant that this came to the full county board. So therefore, the descending vote would have been potentially to bring it to the full board, which, which is where we are here now today. And I, I don't, I mean, I, I think David did the right thing and, and bringing Chairman Lino did the right thing and, and bringing this in, in front of the full board. I had, I have gotten a handful of calls from people within the county department heads and others, which will go unnamed. That were appreciative of the position that many of us on that admin committee took in saying that this probably wasn't something that we should do. Now, in the admin committee, when it was tabled, I was the one that asked for the tabling and, and we asked for it to be tabled. Until after we did the review on the nine hour workday. Let, let's, let's get through that and when we review that in September, let's take a look at how all this works and maybe we add it at that time. And I was convinced to modify my tabling request to have it brought back to the next meeting. Which we did and, and again, the vote is what the vote was. But you know, many department heads or many of the people I'd called responded with some sort of difficulty that they felt that this was going to bring to the county. What I'd like to see happen, which I do believe is what's going on here right now, is, is give departmental head discretion. I'm not against a snow day, staying home and you know, you COVID, you're sick, I mean, we all understand that. Don't, don't come to work and maybe your computer's at home and, and you work at that pace and that's the way a lot of industry is. And that's the way a lot of folks do their business here these days. So, but I think putting the faith in our department heads to monitor that, which is some of what's going on here right now. And if you've got kids that are sick or snow is called up, things of that facet. But to set up a policy that deliberately suggests that those within this county employment can sign up, lobby for, or take a three day home, work at home and a day and a half at work, I, I'm just opposed to that. So that's some of the reasons why I voted no, that was some of the discussion that we had in the admin committee. I'm sure that I forgot something that maybe I felt was important, but I think generally, I don't think anyone in the admin committee could disagree with that as being the discussion point.
Thank you. Hugh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to kind of echo what Alexis said. There's been a lot of studies in, in newspapers, business about how much more productive folks are when they're at home. That's just was one of the pandemic learnings, another pandemic learning is we are, it is a new normal. Work force flexibility was something that, you know, came to be in post pandemic that people started to value more. And it's, I would echo what Alexis said. If you're more productive at home, why take away that productivity to record that you were productive? One of the best things a leader can be to be authentic is to build trust. And I don't really think this is something that builds trust when you say I gotta document all those activities. And I would think, given the strong leadership that we have within our county departments. Let's trust our employees as the employees are trusting them to do the right thing as part of being a county employee for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Vinnie?
Thank you, I just would like to support this, some similar comments. Also is that I, I feel as we see in the survey that was done, not all departments are the same and don't have the same requirements for being public facing or not. And I think the department heads know that better than anybody. And I trust what they put down on this paper as far as what departments that may or may not work for. Or what even is specific employees that are interested in it now, which could change over time. But I think it would change reflecting what's needed most in those departments. So that trust for the department heads, I think is really important and would like to see that supported. And being able to fill positions, especially I know I'm on the Health and Human Services Board, has been really challenging. And it's taken a ton of time to do and it makes it not competitive with other fields and other people hiring in those same positions if they're not able to work from home. So I think to just not want to do it saying for a county in general excludes other departments that have a more specific need to be able to hire and retain people. I think those are really important. I also trust department heads again to, when we need to have public facing, they will make sure that that happens as it does now. And probably even in an enhanced way by specifically knowing when that needs to be where. So I'm a hundred percent for it. And according to this survey, ninety-six out of three hundred and one, that's a third of the staff that would like to utilize that at least one day a week. So I just, that's what this survey says, it's not less than ten percent. So thank you.
Thank you, Vinnie. Morgan?
I had two points and Vinnie actually answered one of my questions. Of the, of the county employees, about a third would be able to take advantage of this, like that's the universe of potential?
Great.
Okay. And then the other point I wanted to make is there's actually a second part of Sue's quote and it says, just because we don't have to, doesn't mean we shouldn't. And I think this really leads in to, it's a needed step in the culture shift. So Sue actually mentioned that in her public comment. COVID did open up a lot of thought for people. So people learned how people work and where people work and the ways that people are more productive. And if we as a county don't have the resources to prioritize being competitive on pay alone. These are the things that we need to start looking at is adding that extra tool. So I don't think people will abuse it, I also trust our department heads to be able to monitor it. And I think it's necessary and I, I'm very much for this, I'm happy to see it come through.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Dale?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, of this also. And, and we have a, a feature in here that, that is just going for three months. So we'll have a good feel as to what's happening, if there's any abuse to it, et cetera. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to thank you for clarification, I'm not sure where you got the three months from. So it's we're on the same page. So I, this is my staff memo, it came for us, this is policy for us to adopt. In my memo, I suggested, you know, trying it through the end of the year. And we could give a formal report back to the county board to see if they want it to extend it. But I just want to make sure, whatever, right now the motion is just to adopt the policy, which means it just be in place, but.
Okay.
So just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I'm still in favor.
Okay, thank you.
David Engelbert?
Yes, I, I guess I was one at the admin committee that did not support it either. I'm not going to reiterate most of what Mr. Thace said, but I'm in agreement with much of it. And I think that there's several pages here of guidelines and so forth that even Alexis indicated is maybe excessive or not necessary. But knowing different businesses, people that worked at home during the COVID and now their employees are requiring, employers are requiring them to go back to work. Indicates that not everything is, is as smooth as we may think it is. And even these guidelines that we have here talk about remote working employees must respond as soon as possible, but no later than during the same workday, any communications from the supervisor unless circumstances make it physically impossible to respond. I, I mean, that raises questions to me of how those employees are responding. They, they need to be in contact with their supervisor anytime. I, I don't see the need for some of these guidelines that are in here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Todd?
Yeah, just to put it in perspective, when I said the ten percent, in our admin meeting, when we talked about how many people will be able to utilize it, I think Joel had said about seven in his organization. And, and we didn't have the benefit of the memo that, that Mr. Pabek has now put out. And in a, in a meeting, we counted that and it was talked about about thirty people would be able to take advantage of that. So that's where the ten percent came from, I can do the math and I understand the memo that he's got, so just understand that.
Vinnie?
I was just curious, what's the introductory period length? He said it would be available after that, how long is that? For a new employee?
Traditionally, it's six months, correct Kelly?
So, but they like, upon applying for a job, they would be notified that after six months, they would have the option to work remote. So it still could be a recruiting tool and seen as a benefit, yeah.
Anybody else?
Right, before we go to Verboard, I'll make my comment. At the admin meeting, I, you know, from a basic level of working in the workforce for many, many decades, I initially was opposed to this. But as I sat and thought about it, listened to Joe, listened to some of the other department heads, listened to some of the other options. I also contacted a couple of administrators that were on that map to get their input. To me, it became an additional tool. We've been struggling in many areas of the county in hiring. And if this can help, I, I'm for it from that aspect. We're also not saying everybody's going to take three days, the vast majority of people would be doing one day, if you look at what the chart actually said. And if I recall some of Joe's comments in, in the admin meeting was, he said he had up to seventy employees that would take the one day. And seven employees that would take the three days. Okay, so it, there, there is a significant group in Health and Human Services that would utilize it. And the department head and the department and the committee, the Health and Human Services Committee feels that that would be appropriate in particular for that department based on what they did through COVID and where we're at now going forward. And so I do, I did change my position. So you could say I was six and one, I became one of the three, the four and three as a result of that thought process. After the committee meeting was over, I did talk to a, a couple supervisors, other department heads, some employees brought it up. And that's when I chose to go ahead and, and use the chairman's prerogative to bring it back. Because it was so close on the vote, everybody was moving kind of position wise. And that's where I came from and that's what, that's what my discussion was at, at the admin committee. Any other questions or comments? Any other discussion? Joel?
Yeah, I've been thinking long and hard about this too, and I think my perspective is being a, it's a generational thing for, you know, to a point. Being in the middle of the road here compared to all of our colleagues around here. But I was reluctant on this myself and I, I agree with everything that everybody is saying on all sides of the conversation. But at the end of the day, you just said what I was going to say is that if this is one possible potential thing that could be a, a opportunity to entice somebody to come and work for the county and, and be of value. I'm supportive of it and that's the one thing that I keep thinking of in my head right now. So just on that potential alone, I, I think it's, I'm going to support it. And, and you're right, when it comes down to the end of the day and where the rubber meets the road, our department heads and our supervisors are the one that lay the groundwork and the footwork for allowing this to happen. And if we don't have trust and faith in those folks, then we have nothing. So I, I'm, I think I'm going to support this and, you know, and I would be more inclined to support it more if we could do it as a trial thing to the end of the year. I think that's a caveat that we can maybe get on board with too, so that's an idea maybe. But that would be a sure thing in my supportive, yes, if, if we did that.
Okay. Todd?
Well, I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution to put this in place for a period of six months. And at the end of six months, there's a fully detailed report as to how it was utilized and, and any complaints or any positives or negatives that, you know, may have came and, and then the county board gets a kick at the can one more time. And you know, maybe between that point in time. You know, some of the things David talked about in regard to the requirements that were put in place, maybe that are too harsh. And Alexis spoke about that maybe too harsh, that there'd be an opportunity to go back to it. So we're not, A, hiring anybody with the promise that they have remote working opportunities. I mean, you'd have to tell them that it's on a trial basis. And B, you know, it would give it maybe a chance for those like me that have a bit less confidence in this to see what happens. And maybe get the generational, and I guess I'm on the side of, of the generation that Joe may be talking about here. Give me a chance to get on board, figure out how to start up my computer and work from home.
Okay, so you're making a formal motion for that amendment?
I am.
Is there a?
I, I tried to.
Well, no, yours did come up, we just didn't do anything. It's still sitting here, so I didn't know if I'm supposed to accept yours or?
Jeff is my witness, it's not working.
So what do I do with hers?
So we just need a motion in a second.
Okay, so I'm going to get rid of Alexis and go to Todd's?
No, e- either way, whoever makes the motion in a second.
That's the motion?
She, she wanted to.
Oh, right, but I did, I tried to push a motion to amend, so.
Yeah, I don't see a motion to amend on my thing.
And I can't push the button either.
See how technol- technology? We're going to work from home?
For you to amend. So I'm going to ignore yours.
Okay, now try, try.
I'll try again, Todd.
Try, try to hit your thing.
I think his wasn't working because hers.
Did it work? I have the floor, it tells me I have the floor.
Yes.
Yep. So it's on the floor.
Okay, so we have, so we have a motion in a second to amend the resolution for a six month trial period. And to reevaluate at the end of the six month period of time. Come back to the county board and decide if it continues after that or if there's amendments to the process. Did I say that correctly?
Yep, I couldn't have said it any better.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay, so if anybody wants to speak, that's on the speaker board, you have, you're speaking to the amendment, not to the original motion. Vinnie?
Thank you, um, I don't, sorry, Todd, to go back and forth, but I, I don't want to support this amendment because I feel six months is an unrealistic amount of time. One, get it all implemented, two, recruit any staff. We've had open spots for staffing for more than a year in some positions, and that process is a lot of work. And so to, it won't be a recruiting tool then, because you can't guarantee it. And then the time passes, the months go on of having interviews and hiring someone, and it's not available, because you can't say it is and then take it back. And I feel it's similar to any increase in pay or flexibility with something. If it's temporary and then taken back, now you have a lot of people that liked working remote, and now they can't. So I think it's not good policy to do it for six months and then consider not doing it. I think we won't have enough information after six months to know, to really make a difference. So I'm against the amendment, thank you.
Alexis?
Thank you, um, I wanna echo, um, Supervisor Shomo as well in that this six-month period would be for, um, current employees, cause even if we did hire somebody tomorrow, this six-month, um, introductory period would preclude the person from participating in this program. So we have no idea how that, that recruitment class would do or how we would so. And frankly, to put a word to, um, if I may, um, it's disingenuous to just put a six-month term on this, and then we'll reevaluate. Um, I think this is a recommendation from the staff. It's a recommendation that I've heard, and that is successful, has been successful in many models. And, um, I will not be supporting this amendment, thank you.
Thank you. Morgan?
Sure, I wanna echo the previous two supervisors. Um, this wouldn't be a tool for recruitment if we didn't, were weren't able to start it until effectively January. Um, we do have positions, especially in public health, that have been open, and we are hemorrhaging people. And like, at the end of the day, the people make the county go. So I, I do not wanna support the amendment, because at the end of those six months, then what happens if we retract it? And then we lose a whole nother wave of people, because they're gonna find an equivalent position that they can do remote. Second question, what would our threshold at the end of December when we reevaluate this? What is our threshold for determining if it worked or if it didn't? Is this just gonna be an anecdotal, I liked it, I didn't like it? Do we have that plan in place to evaluate? Thanks.
Thank you. Nissa?
Morning again. So there's a, a saying about once you give something, someone something that they enjoy, a perk, and then you just say, haha, just kidding, we're taking away, that usually doesn't end well for the business that is supplying that perk. Um, also, when I, I agree with that, it's not going to be a selling point when you, when a new hire finds out that this is an option for them, but it's going to be reassessed before they hit the point that they could have that option, and it's removed from them. Honestly, if that was me and I took a job and I was told I'm going to get this benefit, maybe, and then it's removed, I would look at a different job in a different county. So with that, I mean, the amendment, I understand the reasoning, but it's not going to make it better for potential, uh, employees. Thanks.
Thanks, Nissa. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I look at it a little differently. All our resolutions are temporary. If we pass any resolution and we find out it doesn't work, we always have the right to come back and say, this isn't working, we're gonna change it or, or get rid of it. So I don't see a need to specify it here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll go to the voter board. This is for the amendment. The amendment is to do a trial basis for six months. The amendment has failed on a majority vote of fifteen to five and one absent. So that brings us back to the original motion and the original resolution. Any additional comments on the original resolution? Okay. Can you clear this? Here we go, okay. Alexis?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, cause of this, we've gone over this a lot, but I don't want anybody in the room to think that this is going to solve all of the county's, um, recruitment and retention woes. We have a lot of tools in the toolbox, we're getting there. But it's really up to the department heads and the culture and the type of work environment that we want to have to, in order to recruit and retract, retract, retain, thank you, um, and our employees. So I agree that this is something that we need to do to keep up, but this is not, I don't want anybody to think this is a silver bullet that's gonna solve our problems either, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two daughters, that, well, I have three, but I have two daughters that work from home. And they love it, and it's a time saver, it works out fine. And if they were not doing their job, their employer would know it, and there would be changes made. But their employers have come to realize that it's beneficial. So, uh, that, that's my take on it. So I don't have, I, I, I go along with it, I think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you. One last time, anybody else? All right, we'll go to, to, Hugh?
Are you making a?
Yeah, select a, offer an amendment. And I would like to, uh, amend, um, the, the policy to eliminate the reporting requirements, uh, for the employee. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second on that. Questions or discussion? Sorry. Vinnie?
I have one quick, and, I mean, that feels like it's written into policy, but clearly, if a department head needed to know that, they could just ask the employee that question and would be expected to answer as a, just a good policy of work. So it wouldn't have to be written as a policy to happen if there was an incident that it needed to happen in. It's just a point I wanted to make.
Hugh?
Yes, I agree with that, but I would like to have a start of policy with a presumption of trust. I think that's, again, important, um, to be good leaders. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, anybody else? Okay, so we're gonna go to voter board. This is voting on the amendment to remove the, uh, employee reporting requirement. That's passed by a majority vote of twelve to seven, so that is amended. So the reporting requirement is removed from the resolution.
Okay, now.
Yes, okay, now, now we'll go to the, to the vote on the as amended resolution.
Okay, I think this might be right. Resolution twenty-two, sixty-eight.
Yep, yep. Okay.
I requested to speak, and it either didn't go through or whatever. My question is, I'm okay with the, the last vote, uh, but I just want clarification. This doesn't mean that the, uh, department head cannot check up on a person's performance and what's going on. They still have the right to do that, it's just that it's not demanded on a daily basis from the employee.
Correct.
Okay, just so we don't take anything away from the, the.
Department head.
The power of the department head to see how their, their, their department is working. Okay. Now I'm ready to vote.
That's passed by a majority vote of sixteen yes, four no, and one absent. Thank you. Do you wanna take a break before we finish up, or do you wanna power through? All right, let's take a ten-minute break, come back. All right, resolution twenty-two-two-dash-sixty-eight, appointment of county conservationist, Door County Soil and Water Conservation Department, Dave Engelbert?
Resolution twenty-two-two-sixty-eight for the Director of the Conservation Department, endorsing Greg Colters.
Ken?
Sure, so actually Greg's here. Pleased that he, uh, is willing to accept the position for our county conservationist. I thought I'd just have Greg come up and say a few words for those that may not know him, although he's been here for a long time.
Ken?
Hugh, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Engelbert. I thought because it was soil and water, and I was the chairman of the, of the committee, I would make the, the, uh, uh, motion. So I apologize, Dave.
I accept your apology. Totally prepared to do it as, either.
Well, good morning, everybody. Um, it's good to see a lot of familiar faces here, um, worked with many of you over the years, some of you in the same department. But for those of you that don't know me, uh, I started here in Door County in February of nineteen ninety-three. So this coming February be three decades on the head, so, um, it's been a pleasure. I've worked with just about every program that we've had in the office. Even five years ago, did a little interim, uh, department head. But this time, I've, I've decided to go forward with it, especially with the support from our staff. They really encouraged me to, to go for this position, so it's gonna be an honor to, uh, now lead the department in protecting our resources of Door County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? If not by voice vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Carry. Thank you, congratulations. No ordinances this month? Any oral committee reports from anybody? Review committee minutes? Review vouchers, claims, and bills? Announcements, the next county board meeting is Tuesday, July twenty-sixth at nine AM. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Sir a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.